It's ready, and we are ready. And so at this moment, I'm going to call this meeting to order and ask everybody to rise, please, for the Pledge of Allegiance to the United States of America and the Texas Flags.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas one state under God, one and indivisible.
Eight forty a.m. is the time for the roll. I mean, sorry for the clerk. And Commissioner, I'll just call the roll. Commissioner Hernandez?
Here.
Commissioner Modis? He's on Zoom. We'll get him to unmute here shortly. Commissioner, I'll just call it. Get back to him in a second.
Here.
Commissioner Chesney.
I'm here.
Commissioner Gonzalez. Okay, Commissioner Modis, any luck on unmuting, letting us know that you're with us? There he is. Can hear us okay on audio, Commissioner Modis?
He muted himself again.
Okay, well, I certify a quorum is present, Kara, in the courtroom, but I think Commissioner Modis will be able to join us with audio here shortly. I do note for the record that today is April the eighth, 2022. We are at Nuñez County Courthouse, 901 Leopard, in the Commissioner's courtroom on the third floor. And again, for the record, I do certify a quorum is present. Are there any announcements or disclosures of conflicts of interest that need to be brought forward at this time? Okay, hearing none. I will move to Rebecca, who will give us a very, as I say-
Very brief safety-
A brief, brief safety meeting.
Nope. Testing, can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Testing. Good morning, Judge Commissioners and attendees. Our safety briefing for today, April eighth, is being held in the Nuñez County Commissioner's courtroom. The restrooms are located on the right-hand side of the third-floor atrium past the Human Resources Office. There is a fire extinguisher located at the rear of the courtroom, and also five additional fire extinguishers located throughout the atrium area. Bleed control stations are on every floor. In the event of a cardiac emergency, an AED is located on the right wall next to the Human Resources Office. Participant for today who will be responsible for dialing 911 will be Connie. In the event of an evacuation, our egress route will be slowly down the atrium stairs, proceeding out the doors located on the La Pan Street side of the courthouse and assemble in the parking lot across the street. It is important to stay together. Should there be a need to shelter in place, depending upon the severity of the shelter in place, the courtroom double doors will be secured and remain secure until given further instructions from the Nuñez County Sheriff's Office or other law enforcement agencies. And your guest sanitizer for the day will be Michael. That concludes our safety briefing. Thank you so much, and happy Easter, everyone.
Yes, thank you, Rebecca.
Thank you.
Thank you very, very much. I've been notified from Belinda, who did do a check, I they, that there is no public comment at this time, but of course, I will ask for anybody online if they wish to make public comment. This would be an opportunity to do so. Okay, hearing no public comment, we'll move straight into the regular agenda. Today, there is only one agenda item. It's to discuss and consider the extension of April first, 2022, local disaster declaration related to wildfire activity. And although I did not post the statute, there is a statute that corresponds to this action. In other words, when a local declaration is established within seven days, it must be extended. And so this is what brings us here to court this morning, and thank you for making it a part of your day. I know that any special meeting requires special accommodations for all parties involved, so I do thank the clerk and commissioners for their attendance. With regards to this, we do have both Louis Ray, who can be here as a resource, Emergency Management Coordinator, also Jose Olivades, our Fire Marshal. We are under another red flag day with no serious precipitation in sight, so I did want to bring that awareness. But on with us this morning, oh, good, Clerk for the Record, John Modis, is here with us. And so we, thanks, John. We were having problems earlier, but we see you now on video. And you can unmute whenever you need to. But with us this morning is John Ovaya. He is our Region Three, Tidham Section Chief. I think that's the correct title, John. I know you've been everything, as they say before. You've been district coordinator in several jurisdictions, but you are here this morning with us. For those of you that know Gary Barney, he's our district coordinator. Gary couldn't be with us here this morning, but district coordinators report to section chiefs. And so John is with us here with Texas Department of Emergency Management to help lay a little bit of a background and predicate as to the importance of the declaration and what it does for the state of Texas, what it does for Nuñez County. Let me just say that I did issue the disaster declaration in response to a coordinated effort. All the counties around us issued the declaration on the same day. The governor did include Nuñez County in his declaration, along with everybody else, but John probably has that complete list. But it did include Jim Wells. I believe it included Duval, Brooks, Clayburg, Kennedy, Aransas, San Patricio. And the reason that that was so important is that we have all, as counties, been responding by mutual aid agreements to ourselves. We had our own fires, but also to our neighbors. There was over 50,000 acres that were burned in Clayburg County, and CCFD responded, our ESDs, one, two, and three responded. And I believe City of Robstown and Bishop also responded. When they respond, there are dollars that are incurred, and it is in this vein that the state of Texas has been accumulating all these costs. It's my understanding, but I'm hoping John will shed some light, that we are very close to meeting our federal threshold, I mean, our state threshold for federal assistance. And once that happens, it opens the door to not only the dollars that could be recuperated, but also, and very importantly, the hazard mitigation grants for our future that will help us in preparedness so that the taxpayer isn't burdened here locally, that we get these opportunities from the federal resources. This is how we're still operating under Hurricane Harvey. CDBG grants are a result of resources that come from disaster declarations. So because of the seriousness of Texas's fires this season, we do expect that we will meet the threshold, and we do expect that opportunities and resources will come our ways to the counties that have availed themselves because of need and because they have spent money. You should know there is a running tally of what our costs are thus far, but they're countywide, and Louis Ray has been the point of contact, so if Corpus Christi spends money, they let us know what that money is. And I think last week, Louis, it was $179,000, but you probably have more updated information than I do.
Good morning, everybody. So, yes, Judge, so that's the last number that I have. I'm reaching out to our county partners today, especially with the Fire President of our county, to make sure that we have all the accurate numbers that we needed. Last time we had one come in was Friday of last week, and then now we're trying to get it for this week. So we're trying to do it on a weekly basis where people-
Right. And that's Chief Clack, correct?
That is correct, Judge.
From Anneville. And he's the one that's been coordinating for all our jurisdictions on the western side. The drought is very serious, the elevated wind conditions, these red flag days are very serious. And just so you know how important it is to have these declarations, we were pretty worried on our own Nuñez County wildfire two weeks ago that we may have to have an evacuation of several businesses and even potentially a detention center. So it's these types of situations that you really want to make sure if you need a star request from the state, that it's available to you. And we would have needed one. So again, we, Tidham consulted with us. Sometimes I consult with Tidham, but in this case, Tidham consulted with us and all the county judges, and this was a coordinated effort. And what we ask of you all today is to extend this, and then when the conditions disappear, then we can revisit, we can revisit. John, would you mind providing a little bit of Tidham perspective for the court? And then I'd like to make a motion to consider the extension.
Absolutely, Judge Gonzalez. Say, good morning, Judge, and good morning, everybody, Commissioners. My name is John Ovaya. I'm the Regional Section Chief for Recovery and Mitigation for TIDAM Region Three. That region covers 27 South Texas counties to support our local officials and any type of incidents, just like we've been experiencing here for the past couple of weeks. And as so far Marshall mentioned, we are going to experience some additional critical fire weather here in the next couple of days. So what we provide is just technical support and guidance, and also if there's unmet needs of resources, we coordinate with other state agencies to provide those resources for those communities that are impacted by that incident, in this case, a fire incident. Right now, we work closely with the Texas A&amp;M, Texas Forest Service, that's able to provide those fire suppression resources to support those incidents. I know Gary Barney, your district coordinator, has been working closely with you, Judge, and the other judges and city mayors here recently, to ensure that we have those resources ready in place to support those incidents. Now, in reference to your declaration, what this declaration does is basically, it lets the state of Texas know that there is a need for support in your community. Right now, you are part of the governor's declaration for this incident, and so we're calling this declaration, we go by numbers, 22-0009 wildfire outbreak. So this incident, because you are part of this declaration, here's one of the assistance that we're able to provide right away. Working in conjunction with the Texas A&amp;M Forest Service, there are emergency grants readily available to the volunteer fire departments in your county that had sustained damages to their fire apparatuses or their PPE, for example, their fire protective equipment, that they're able to get some assistance, up to $15,000, so to say. So we have that information available for you, Judge, so you can distribute that to your volunteer fire departments, to your ESDs, to see what kind of assistance they can get. We work closely with your regional fire coordinator, which is Mr. James DeGrassi of the Texas A&amp;M Forest Service, so I'll make sure that he reaches out to the fire chiefs and make sure that that program's being promoted. The other thing that we're doing also, Judge, is we're also keeping track of costs of this incident. I know a lot of cities and communities have incurred costs as a result of responding to this incident, primarily your fire departments. So I'll ensure that our district coordinator and Gary Barney will reach out to the cities to make sure that we report those costs. We've got to meet those thresholds in order for us to get that federal assistance from FEMA. As you know, that our federal threshold has increased as a result of the population census count here just recently. So our threshold for the state is $47.5 billion, right? So anything that we do in the response side, we've got to make sure we're keeping track of costs. Any damages that we sustain to our fire apparatuses or critical infrastructure as a result of those fire incidents, we've got to make sure we report that as well. So the program that we have is called PSTAT, the Public Assistance State of Texas Damage Assessment Program. And I'll make sure that my recovery team and coordination with Mr. Gary Barney reaches out to your folks and to make sure that we're able to include those damages, but also, most importantly, those costs that the fire departments are incurring. So those are the things that we're working on right now, Judge, with our district coordinator, with your city mayors, and your neighboring counties, to make sure that we're able to get that, to see what's going to be the overall result of this declaration. Now, just to let you know, Judge, also, there's over 70 counties that are part of this declaration or submitted declarations, and we know that majorities' counties are still going through the critical fire incidents, and they're still responding to this incident type. So Judge, I'll be here to answer any additional questions or comments that are needed to support your declaration process here.
Great. And so, again, I'm going to make the motion to extend the April first, 2022, local disaster declaration, ask for a second, and then call for discussion and open the floor for any questions, given we've laid a good predicate here. Is there a, okay, motion second. How about questions for Chief Ovaya, or Louis, or myself? We can report that even though, again, it's a red flag day, we have been fortunate here in Nuñez County that all of our, you know, fires had containment. The Borrega Fire was the one that was really challenging and took quite a bit of effort, but thanks to the TFS helos that are located in Jim Wells County, our Nuñez County fires, I think, had two drops. Is that right, Louis? We had two Hilo drops. You might want to just tell people, we talk about resources, what type of resources we're talking about. It's an impressive array that's sitting in Jim Wells County.
Right, Judge. So we do have, well, the Fire, Texas A&amp;M Wildfire Service has, and they staged a couple of helos for drops. Those tankers came in to help us out on the Penta's Fire, which they had two drops at that time. And then because we had back-to-back fires, we still expended a lot of fuel. And then they also have the wildfire, Texas A&amp;M wildfire also has an engine that they also deploy out when we need it. The Fire Association has a incident command post that they deploy out whenever we need to set up for a wildfire event. And just speaking about the Borrega Fire, I mean, we had ESD, like the judge said, one, two, and three responded, along with volunteers from Bishop. So, I mean, we're taking a lot of resources in on these fires. This goes without being said, we all know that. The point of it is, we have to put in for the grants to get those fundings back. For instance, we also lost a brush fire truck in one of our wildfire events. So, and that's a part of our cost collecting process as well.
That was going to be my question, Judge, if that's okay, if I can jump in?
Absolutely, jump in.
Do you have a breakdown of what the costs are so far that you could provide us?
I can.
Can you, like, now? I mean, can we get that?
I can send it to you.
Because we didn't have anything. The hard part about this is, we don't have any background, again, in the agenda item to know exactly what the justification is, so I appreciate you being here, Mr. Ovaya being here. But I'm just asking questions because I don't know the answers legitimately, so could you, I'd like to see what the costs are that we're talking about, and like, I didn't know about that brush fire truck. That's good to know, but, I mean, if you could, I'm assuming some of those are from the, you're saying, from the city as well, or?
So for the brush fire truck, I mean, the city responded to a couple of our fires that were local, and they also responded to the Borrega Fire. But they didn't lose any assets at that point. The brush fire truck was lost from Annneville. That truck was called up in a response to a fire that, to a response to the fire at the same time the Penta's Fire was happening. So that brush fire truck went up. They sent a, they sent a cost PDA for us. That's, a PDA is a, basically, an assessment of damages, preliminary assessment of damages that they sent to us. So I can provide all that information-
I just sent it to, I just found that PDA, and sent it to I they, and she can circulate it to everybody.
And that's got all the cost on it, is that what you're?
It's just a preliminary. So-
Yes.
What we've learned, and what I've learned with fires, is the equipment takes, you take a big hit to your equipment in the firefighting world. And so whether it's bulldozers that are moving earth or your brush fire trucks, it just, it takes a big toll. There's also, of course, a very big concern about the amount of fuel that we're also expending. But again, the declaration triggers everybody starting to count for the costs. So even though we have a PDA that's given to us from one arena, it's not the cumulative that, I mean, it takes weeks and weeks and weeks to put forth their damage assessments. We take a long time on that. I'll give you a great example, you know, take, you know, Winter Storm. I mean, we had extension after extension because it takes so long to gather all of the cost estimates. And we're still in the, we're still in response mode, not in recovery mode. So in response mode, everybody's still on point to get to whatever, you know, whatever fire incident there might be. And today, everybody's going to be on high alert.
Thank you. If you can get me the breakdown, I've got this original, this one that was sent, this says 123,000, it doesn't have 179, so if you can maybe supplement that. You said, someone said this 179,000 number, so somebody's got to have a breakdown of the whole 179. I'd like to see that.
Okay, good.
If you could, that'd be great. And then, Mr. Ovaya, I guess I'm, questions for you is, what are the conditions predicate on this that make the governor issue an order like this that is above and beyond, let's say, burn bans? We have brush fires down here all the time. Obviously, the Clayburg County stuff was significant, way above and beyond. But we have, you know, we have, it's dry down here all the time, there's drought conditions down here all the time. We have burn, I think we have a burn ban in place now, still, because of that. So I'm just trying to figure out, and I know you can't read the governor's mind, but you are the governor's agency, so, well, the state of Texas agency, who I guess reports to the governor. So I'm just trying to figure out how you get to going from a burn ban to declaring an emergency, and what conditions that we should be looking at in trying to figure out how long to extend this, to extend this, et cetera.
That's a great question, Commissioner. So one of the biggest partners that we have, that we work closely with this, with the National Weather Service.
The National What Service?
Yes, that's correct.
Excuse me, Connie, would you put his volume way up?
Way, yeah, thank you. I thought it was just me not being able to hear.
I was struggling.
Okay.
Hold on, John, we're going to get you.
I'm sorry about that.
Go ahead.
I guess I could do closer to the mic, too.
Okay.
Yes, so Commissioner, that was a great question you just asked. So one of the things that we work with as our agency, we work with a lot of partners, and in this case here, we work closely with the National Weather Service partners and also the Texas A&amp;M Forest Service. So they're telling us, more or less, here's our current conditions that are standing right now that could be a factor in critical fire incidents. So here, within the past, late last month, and going into the month of April, we saw those factors that was just kind of priming for severe fire conditions to occur. And so you saw that here in the northern part of the state and also the western part of the state, we had some major fire incidents, which included loss of structures, and also we lost one law enforcement partner as a result of the evacuation process. So those are the things that tells us that we had to start activating resources, state resources, to start responding to those areas there, because we know that threat's there. As we noticed that the threat was coming further south to us, the weather threat, we started moving those resources down to our region state. So there, like Judge mentioned, and of course, the Fire Marshal mentioned, we have pre-precision resources to respond throughout the whole South Texas region. As a matter of fact, when we were, when the Borrega Fire occurred, we had those state resources down there in South Texas fighting a 300-acre fire, and once they concluded that, they shipped those resources to the Borrega Fire. So, Commissioner, what I can tell you is, the main thing is-
Okay. We have to pause for just a moment. I'm sorry, we've lost a quorum present physically, so if you could just pause, please.
You may not know that either.
Forgive us, John. Our court manager is going to check on one of our commissioners. He needed just a quick break. And what happens is, is, you know, we've lost our quorum. He just stepped outside. I apologize.
Absolutely. No worries.
Okay, you're good to go, sir.
And another thing, Commissioner, we look at is what are the current needs for those communities? And so that's what we look at to determine whether, on the declaration process from the state side.
So, and I appreciate that, because this is really interesting, because I don't, I've been here now, I mean, this is my eighth year, and I don't remember us ever issuing a declaration like this on fire. So this is new to me, and I may be not remembering one or two, but I don't remember us doing it. So this is really good information, and I appreciate that. So why, saving aside the horrible tragic fire that's going on in Clayburg and in Refugio Counties, we haven't, we've been fortunate, knock on wood, in Nuñez County that ours have been not anything to that extent. So I'm just trying to say, I guess, ask too, and I'm not trying to, like, I'm just trying to dig down, what was different, and I know, I don't know how long you've been in your position, I apologize, but I'm trying to figure out what was different about this that was so significant to declare a disaster versus all the other times that we've done burn bans, and we've had dry weather, and we've had, I mean, we have wind in this community all the time. We're one of the windiest, Chicago's really not the windiest city, I think Corpus Christi is. And so I'm just trying to figure out what was the drill down here that got to where this was needed to be declared an emergency? And again, I'm not criticizing, I'm just, I'm truly asking, because I've never been through this, that I can remember.
And I understand, Commissioner. So one of the things is just the amount of fires that our fire department's been responding to. It's just compared to the multiple other seasons that we've seen, that I've been working closely with these fire departments here recently, and it's just the amount of fires that we respond to, but it's just also the acreage of fires that they're burning that they're responding to. And that's where they say that they needed the support from the state, and so that support comes from the Texas A&amp;M Forest Service, where their firefighting resources, and so they were able to come down and support us as a result of that. It's just the increase of fire activity that we see, and of course, with the weather conditions, that's the other contributing factor.
So every, like, every county's different. I would, I get, I mean, Clayburg's, it's tragic, right? I just, Refugio, horrible. I'm just trying to get, and I'm still, again, just drilling down, why Nuñez County? In other words, we haven't had-
Right.
-what I would consider, thank God, an extraordinary amount in Nuñez County. I mean, there's a brush fire a week, that's a little excessive. I represent the island, as you may or may not know. We have brush fires out there all the time because of the wind, the dry conditions, and so forth. What is it in Nuñez County that I guess the Weather Service and Texas A&amp;M Forest Service says, we need to have one? Because it's a big deal, right? I mean, if you're going to declare an emergency, people, you know, you don't want to just declare, and I'm not saying that's what happened here, I think this was valid to do, this first one. So now I'm questioning, because that's the law, right? Governor issues the emergency, or the judge can issue, and it has to be extended by the court. So now we have to vote on it, and if we don't vote to extend it, then it doesn't get extended. So I'm not doing this in any way, shape, or form, critical, and so I'm doing it because I truly am trying to understand why in Nuñez County, the Forest Service and the Weather Service believes this is any different than it has been over the last six years, when we get so much wind, so much dryness, so much, I mean, there's, like I said, there's two or three brush fires a month out on the island, you know, and it's, thankfully, we have a great volunteer fire department out there, and a local fire department that takes care of them. But I'm just trying to figure out what in Nuñez County, specifically, the Weather Service and the Forest Service said, in Nuñez County, you should do this. Not Clayburg, not Refugio, not all the other nine counties, but in Nuñez County. Because I, me personally, I'm just not, I'm not seeing it, but that doesn't mean it's not there. It's just I'm not seeing what I'm seeing in all the other, some of these other counties. So is there a specific thing that they said, hey, you really got to watch out in Nuñez County because of these conditions? Or is it just a general, because we're all in the coastal bend, and it's all the 11 counties that we, that were picked?
So, Commissioner, one of the things is, I don't have the actual, the number of fire responses that in Nuñez County, particularly to wildland fires or brush fires, so I can't tell you that. So what I can tell you is that-
Ask the Fire Marshal that one. I appreciate that. That's fair, you don't, if you don't have that.
Yeah. So, but what I can tell you is, the increased response to these type of incidents, and you being, and you've seen, a lot of communities are responding to these types of incidents, and, you know, as the Commissioner's Court, the declaration process will let the governor know, hey, there is some needed support for Nuñez County because of the increase of fire response, and also, the support is needed. because of the increase of fire response, and, you know, and also, the support is needed for additional fire resources that we can get to, to, to New Oasis County. So those fire resources, like I mentioned before, as we have the Texas A&amp;M Forest Service, we have what's called the TIPMS program that we have, that we bring in other fire resources to be staged there, and your fire departments there, that, that need support. But also, just the fact that, just the cost tracking that you're doing, because you declared the county, the cost tracking to see if we can get those other federal programs, and once we meet the thresholds, that you'll be eligible as a county and supporting for your, for your, for your fire departments and for your cities.
Okay, so that, that's a great segue into my questions for the Fire Marshal, because I don't either. I don't know what the number of responses are, what support we really need, that's what I'm trying to get to, because, I mean, literally, we, to me, this could be something we're gonna be, we could be doing on a regular basis, if, so I want to make sure if, if we're gonna do this on a regular basis, that we have a baseline or a threshold, or if some, because I just don't have any data to show me what's gone on that predicates this in New Oasis County, in New Oasis County, so can you tell me that?
I, I cannot, sir, but what's, to answer your question, I think is, ESD one, Corpus Fire have, we're, we're just a major hub in this area, so we're responding to all these other counties. To, and that's, it's costing us fuel, it's costing us the manpower, it's costing us.
Do you have a breakdown of all that?
I, I do not have a breakdown of all the fires that we've been to, sir, no.
So that's, that's the problem that I have with this, I, I'll probably agree to do this for a short period of time. There's no data for us, okay? No offense, but nobody gives us a cost breakdown. Appreciate the Judge Ford and what she forwarded right now, thank you. Didn't have that. Don't know the number of responses, how they've increased in New Oasis County. How am I, I'm, I'm struggling, and no offense, but you're the Fire Marshal, right? You should have this stuff, you should have come in here prepared, knowing that you, you've been around this court, we don't rubber stamp stuff, you know I ask a lot of questions that sometimes people aren't comfortable with me asking, but I'm gonna ask anyway, no matter what. It's not fair to ask this court to do something with no data, it's just not fair, because everybody feels like we should do it, and just because the governor did it, which I respect, I'm glad, the governor's doing it because he needs to do it to be able to use state resources. He included our county out of whatever reason he did, I don't know, and I can't ask the governor, he's not here. So, but just because the governor did it, doesn't mean I'm gonna do it if there's not a true and real emergency, because I don't want to use this emergency declaration if it's not a true and real emergency in New Oasis County. I'm not saying it's not, be clear. I'm not taking that position. I'm taking the position of, you as a Fire Marshal should have provided me more information, no offense, but as emergency management, y'all should have come in here with more information, other than just because there's been a declaration issued by the judge that we had some breakdowns. I, we, it's not fair to ask us to make decisions without background. The only thing that I got in my packet was the declaration, and nothing to back it up, so I'm in here now, I'm gonna ask a lot of questions, which is fine, I think it's good for the public to see the questions being asked, if, if we're watching it at nine o'clock on a Friday morning. But I don't, I don't, like I said, as a matter of caution, might I extend this for a few days until someone can get me more information to explain to me why I need to extend it longer? Sure, I might do that, but I'm not gonna extend, I'm not gonna vote to extend it very long based on what I've got today. I just, it's not, and, and I don't, and I think the public deserves that too, so I just need more info.
In the interest of time and your request, we could put it on next week's agenda and provide the information that you're requesting. But one of the things I wanted to do, and I just sent it to Iday again, is to give you the governor's declaration as well, and he said, she says that you guys do have that.
Yeah, I read that, yes, ma'am.
Just remember that the purpose of a declaration is not that you're in an emergency, it's that it poses an imminent threat of one. That is a really important piece of disaster declarations, is that we certify in these declarations that an imminent threat of widespread or severe damage of loss of life or property is possible. And thereby, that local disaster avails ourselves of the things that you're asking. So, the truth is, is that once you issue the deck, a number is given, a number is assigned. You heard Chief Ovaya talk about that number from the state level, we also have an internal number that gets assigned. And then therefore, it triggers our emergency management plan, which triggers all the queries that you're asking. So all the, all the questions that you're wanting to know, we then send out to all the jurisdictions. Port A to Bishop, to Bencetti, Awadulse. But the Fire Marshal is right, we are responding, different jurisdictions are responding, so CCFD.
Maybe he can tell me more about those jurisdictions that are responding, give me some general information, because, I, I mean, I, I still want all the data, I'm still not willing to extend this ad nauseam, just until I get more data.
That's fine.
But I mean, if the Fire Marshal, you know, he made a, good point, he made a comment, so I'll, I can let him tell us what, what, what are these extra things that we're doing? Because I don't know, I mean, I don't know, and, and the point of the declaration is, the judge gets to declare it, validly declared the declaration. But then, in that seven-day period, if you want the Commissioner's Court to extend it, someone needs to give us information to vote on this reasonably, not just because of all the things that, you know, and, and nothing the judge said is incorrect, right, on, that he just said. But, but the other part of that is, we then have the responsibility of deciding whether to extend this or not, that's the law.
Right.
We have the, just because the governor in, in extent, puts forth a declaration, we, county judge doesn't even have to follow that governor's declaration, and if she or he does, we don't have to extend on it, that's the law. So, I, I appreciate that the governor did it, I'm all for extra resources, but I don't know what they are. I mean, I don't know what we're talking about. What are the jurisdictions you're talking about? What are the extra things that we're going to? Are you saying Cal Island's going out to Clayburg to help them? Or you, or, I mean, I.
Exactly, Commissioner, so those in the local jurisdiction, and those in the local agreements are what we're using right now. If we declare an extended emergency that allows us to use those partners to come in, and then, on the backside of that, there's, there's got to be a price to be paid. Fuel costs money, personnel costs money, food costs money, and that's how we get our, our reimbursement back in. If we hit a threshold, we can get that money back. On top of that, there is the individuals who are involved in those emergencies. So, right now, beside the P stat, there's the I stat, there are people who can go in and plug in information when they lose property for fires. But, in order to trigger emergency management to come in to help with debris management or debris removal, we need to hit a, a certain threshold. Extending our declaration could help that.
Right, so what he's saying is that, for example, in the Pentus Fire, we lost eight structures. So just in that removal, there's individuals that will be affected, and the purpose of the extension is to be able to do exactly what you're asking for. The, we're, again, we're still in response mode, we're still in a red flag mode. But with the extension of the declaration, what you get is the damage assessments. It, after Hurricane Hannah, it takes thirty to forty-five days, in fact, we got two extensions, to be able to receive all the information. The purpose of the extension of the declaration is to recognize there's an imminent threat, and to recognize that we have the background. I, I did want to make sure that you also had, and that, for the record, that were, I just sent to Iday, but I, I think she's got it. But the National Weather Service.
I read that too, yes, ma'am.
The red flag warnings, and also, we, we also have a listing of, in the governor's proclamation, be sure and look at all of the counties. Again, District Twenty has, John, does it have eleven counties in it? Chief? Eleven counties, District Twenty? Okay, and it was my understanding that the day that we were coordinating with Tedom, that all eleven counties declared. So, let's agree that Kennedy County, seven hundred and, all, all seven hundred of them, you know, they don't have the resources. And they don't have a raging fire, but they have a declaration.
The state can send resources to Kennedy County, right, Mr. Ovaya? I mean, whether we declare, I mean, it doesn't, in other words, I mean, I'm all for helping people, but this is, I'm trying to determine what's the best initiative in New Oasis County. So my understanding, Mr. Ovaya, is the reason the governor issues the, the, the declaration for those counties is so that he can use state, state resources for Kennedy County, right? I mean, isn't that how that's supposed to work, is, because you can't necessarily, Kennedy County can't necessarily rely on Bear County or some other county to help them, that's why the state issues the emergency, is that correct, Mr. Ovaya? That's, that, so you're helping Kennedy County because the governor's declared a declaration? Right?
That's correct.
So all these other counties are covered in the declaration that the governor issued? And then those counties would issue their independent ones for, for that, that work? I think it's great that we want to help other people, without a doubt, but that's what the, I mean, that's what the state's doing to help these counties too. So, I'm trying to figure out what's going on in New Oasis County, that, is there a, is there a fire now? Is there something going on that, like, I want to know what, what has gone on in New Oasis County, because the state is helping the other counties.
But, but what's going on now is an imminent threat, so if, the way that I was trained, and really by Chief Ovaya and his superiors, is that you ask yourself this, if you were in the cone of a hurricane, would you issue a disaster declaration? And the answer is yes, you would, and we are in the cone of wildfires, and so the same theory applies. And the idea here is to avail New Oasis County of resources, dollars, and opportunities. What are those opportunities? The grants that will come to us if you do not have the declaration? That is, that could be an inhibitor to those opportunities. The, the actual disaster deck allows us to create the assessments, shove, bring those up to the state, push those up to the state, help the state make their threshold, and most importantly, avail ourselves of the resources.
I was just talking about the Kennedy County example, I, I was just, you know, you made the example of Kennedy County and, and, and New Oasis. Well, that's what the state's supposed to help Kennedy County, because, like I said, Kennedy County can't rely on other counties, because those counties around them may not have the resources either, so I don't, so I was just responding to your Kennedy County example, which means that, that's where the state's gonna help.
Well, I was gonna say that, that they have a deck, they have a deck too, right? But just so you know, New Oasis needs resources, those helicopters that are stationed in Jimwells that came to help us, those are the examples of state resources.
Okay, so tell me again, I'm gonna give you, tell me again, where's the imminent threat in New Oasis County? I know we have some weather days, and we have some, where's the imminent threat that's more so in New Oasis County than it is at any other time, that we have burn bans, dry conditions, and high winds, which is about eighty percent of the time, maybe not eighty, about sixty percent of the time we live in New Oasis County? So what is the imminent threat? The judge keeps using the word imminent threat. Fire Marshal, tell me what the imminent threat is. Mr. Ovaya, tell me what the imminent threat is, because I'm, I just, I'm trying to get an answer as to what the imminent threat in New Oasis County is.
Exactly what, what you just said, sir. The imminent threat is that, that we are in that, we've, we always are, but because of the acreage that's burned so far, within our regions, within the eleven counties, that they just don't want that to occur here.
So it's not an imminent threat, it's a, we're worried that something could happen that's happening in another county. And it's not imminent threat to me, to, to, to use, I mean, your judge is using the hurricane example, that's a completely different deal. That's a completely different.
But forgive me, but the answer comes from the National Weather Service, Brent.
Guys, if you don't mind me finishing, but the, the imminent threat for a hurricane, using the example, is, we can, you can see the, the thing coming. You know, we, we know what the imminent threat is, based on the weather projections and everything else, that's a completely different thing than saying there's an imminent threat in Clayburg County, that doesn't necessarily, to me, mean there's an imminent threat in New Oasis County, to continue to use emergency-type situations. Because I'm, this, I mean, literally, we could do this six times a year, and I, I, I'm, I'm not, that makes me real nervous to just keep using emergency declarations. Because these conditions, we've had big fires in other counties for years, and, and again, I've never seen us do this.
Let me just give you a quick example, sir.
Please, that'd be great.
For, for resources, what the state has is two bulldozers, the, the choppers, but they don't have manpower. They, they give us the, the equipment, right? And the, and those people to operate those equipments, but when it comes to, to actual manpower in Clayburg County, let's say, for instance, in the Borrego Fire, they, they just don't have the people to go out there and fight this fire. So that's where the mutual aid agreements come in with New Oasis County.
But we get those, but those mutual aid agreements, we get those reimbursed with or without a, an emergency, because if there's not an emergency in New Oasis, but if we gotta go help someone in Clayburg, which we should, and we, and we want to, that's what the mutual aid agreements are for, and we get reimbursed for those mutual aid agreements with or without the emergency declarations, right? I mean, there's, there's, in other words, if there's no emergency in New Oasis County, then I don't want to declare an emergency, if there is, then I do.
And, and you are correct.
An emergency in, in Clayburg County is not an emergency necessarily in New Oasis County, or in San Pat, even if they border us.
But it's costing us resources.
Proves to me that there is, right? So are you saying, because we use our resources, if we don't declare an emergency, even though there may or may not be one in New Oasis, that we don't get reimbursed because of these mutual aid?
It'll assist us in getting reimbursed. We have to meet that threshold that they're talking about. We, we've responded to, you wanted to know, to Clayburg, we've responded to Live Oak, we've responded to Jimwells, to Refugio, to San Patricio. These are all the areas that, that are looking to us, New Oasis County, to come in and assist them. They, again, they don't have the manpower when those fires get to that stage, to where it's critical.
Totally understand, but if we, if we do that, and we help them, there, we have mutual aid agreements, and we charge them for it, the way I understand it, and someone can correct me if I'm wrong, and people do all the time, and I have no problem with that. The mutual aid agreements are in place, so that if they can't do it, we can do it. If they have an emergency declared in their county, then they would pay us for the mutual aid part of the agreement, and then they would get reimbursed, right? Isn't that how those work, Mr. Ovaya? Do you know? Does anybody know? Because again, these are all questions that I think are important to note. Because if there's not a, a true threat in New Oasis County, in New Oasis County, I'm not hearing anything in New Oasis County of substance yet. I'm hearing that we're helping other people, which we should, I'm all for. But I always understood, we got reimbursed by the, by the mutual aid agreements for the help that we gave, and then they got reimbursed because they asked for the reimbursement, because they had the true emergency. If that's not right, tell me. Mr. Ovaya, do you know the answer?
So Commissioner, what you just stated right now, it's, it's all based on what mutual assisting, uh, uh, mutual aid assistance program y'all have within the coastal bend area. It's, uh, it's, it's with all those counties, the cities that y'all have. So, once you reach a certain point where there's gonna be costs involved, that's, it should be what's in the, in the agreement. But let me, but when we do reach those thresholds, okay, FEMA's gonna look at all that, how, how the mutual agreement works, and that's where, you know, if we, if we reach that, what's called the public assistance declaration, that's where the reimbursement process will come into place for, for your county. Based on the mutual aid assistance program y'all have.
If we reach a public assistance, what was that term you used? I'm sorry, public assistance?
Public assistance declaration. So remember, there, there were mention about thresholds, we have to reach that threshold of forty-seven point five billion dollars, right? Overall, as a state, okay, for us to get that public assistance declaration. And once we get that declaration, the counties that were part of that declaration, okay, are eligible for the reimbursement process.
Okay, so, and I guess that's another area that I need to understand, these mutual aid agreements, because I mean, this thing says declaration of local disaster. I don't see a local disaster in New Oasis County. I see us needing to help other counties and make sure that we get reimbursed, I, I see that right now. So I'm struggling with this, because there's nothing going on that I can see in New Oasis County, in New Oasis County, because that's what we're here for. And I, I thought the mutual aid agreements were in place, so that we got reimbursed by these people when they, when we needed to go help them, that we, we send them a bill, and then they would submit their bill because they have a disaster, but if, again, if that's wrong, and I don't know, because again, I don't have all that in front of me today, which is, you're asking me to vote on whether we have a local disaster in New Oasis County? I don't think we have a local disaster in New Oasis County, but if there's some legal terminology that we need to pass this for some reason, okay, but I'd like to know more about those mutual aid agreements too.
I think we can get, I think we can get you some information about that, but I do want to direct your attention to the National Weather Service.
I, I've read it.
Well, what they say is critical fire danger conditions.
But we get these, we get these throughout the year, Judge, I mean, this is not the first time that this has been issued by the Weather Service.
So.
We get them regularly on, on high red flag fire days.
So.
And so, but we've never declared an emergency in New Oasis County on this before, that, since I've been here. So this is a big deal to declare an emergency, a big deal.
So, again, the title is a misnomer, perhaps, for you, and it's, and that it says local disaster. But the disaster is, in the first paragraph, defined as an imminent threat. We do have an imminent threat, therefore, the disaster declaration is appropriate to be extended. If we would like to get additional information from the state, additional information regarding mutual aid, I don't see that being a problem. But I do believe that it is in taxpayers' best interest for the state of Texas, for New Oasis County, to continue this declaration, so that we may avail ourselves of the resources today, in the next thirty minutes, and tomorrow, and whenever we need it, until this imminent threat is no longer for our region. Again, the state of Texas, actually, I was gonna give you one more. Again, the state of Texas, actually, I was gonna give you one more piece of information. Chief Kidd actually sent a a pretty phenomenal letter that may help answer some of your questions in what is so different today versus yesterday.
I'm sorry.
I know, I I just said, I'm just just about to press send.
Okay.
But this was sent to emergency management, um, partners, that would be our office, Louis and myself. And it's just amazing how we're having to pivot now. Currently, he says every single Texas county is operating under a disaster declaration. Yet Tidham only has physical presence in thirty out of the two hundred and fifty-four counties. And he goes on to talk about how we need to pivot and implement and restructure emergency management funds in order to help jurisdictions. The reason I bring this up is because we cannot use the arguments of yesterday, that we've never done this before, as a good reason to continue, the philosophy that this is no big deal. It is a really big deal to lose fifty-five thousand acres to put the kind of support in the field that we have. I will tell you that two, three weeks ago, when we had the Pentus fire, it was a very serious situation because of the fact we thought we may have to move inmates. We don't have that opportunity to come in and avail ourselves of resources because we didn't believe that an imminent threat existed. It would be more prudent, more reasonable than not to continue this disaster, given the fact that we're under a red flag day, no different than we were under when the Pentus fire erupted. We were able to avail ourselves of resources. This is the right thing to do. It's, again, if we did not have the guidance and wise counsel of Tidham through the governor's office, it would be a little more daunting. But when all twenty counties, I'm sorry, when all counties in District Twenty have done the same protocols, I think that you should feel good about the fact that the these protocols are in place for our own economic safety and our own economic opportunities. Um, but what I think would be a good idea is to continue the information process. But when we extend a disaster, the threshold that we're meeting for hurricanes is National Weather Service. For wildfires, it's no different, it's National Weather Service. And you can really count on them, uh, to tell you when you're in imminent threat or peril. And when we get these types of statewide calls, which by the way, a statewide call would not be issued for our county if it was a normal, everyday occurrence. The governor doesn't have time for that, Tidham Chief Kidd has other disasters to manage. And we are having statewide calls every day practically during red flag week. Um, so I think these are all the indicators that provide the justification for us to extend. The statewide calls, issuing the alerts, the coordination with all the District Twenty, uh, county judges. There, this is for a reason. And it's it's incumbent upon us to understand that this imminent threat exists. And the declaration is not because there's a fire burning in Nuasis County. It's because there could be a fire burning in Nuasis County or in any surrounding county, and our people will be asked to move to the front line. Our equipment will be asked to move to the front line. Our resources will be asked to move to the front line. And if we have this declaration in place, we will open the door to potential further resources, reimbursements, and this is why we do this. This is no different than if a storm was brewing in the Gulf and the N W S had, again, that cone aimed at us. That is what the declaration is about, and that's why we need to, um, help the state of Texas, help our county, recover and respond.
So again, I I I I'm gonna just, you're the emergency manager, you're the fire marshal. I'm super frustrated at the presentation today. I'm gonna be honest and transparent. You're nice guys, I like you a lot, it's nothing personal, but you're coming in here and asking me, all of you are, Judge, you, the fire marshal, I guess Tidham, to sign something that says, we have a local disaster. That is a huge bell to ring to me. That is something that if we declare a disaster for everything, people are gonna stop listening to the word disaster because they're not gonna even believe it's a disaster. There, to me, there is not a disaster in Nuasis County. We have, I I, this is, I I re, I days nice, she sends me these weather things, I get them too. I already got the one that she, that that the judge was nice enough to, again, pass on. We, this is not something I haven't seen in the last seven years. And okay, great, you're right. Doesn't mean just because we haven't done it in the last seven years, we shouldn't look at doing it now. This is what we're doing, right? And I'm not saying that the judge did anything wrong in declaring the first disaster. I'll make that very clear. She has the right to do that. I I'm not speaking out in opposition to her declaration, but now I have to vote on it, right? So when I vote on it, I'm just telling y'all, I'm not gonna keep voting on stuff like this with no information. I mean, I am, I am super bothered that you're asking this court to do this and not one shred of thing was given to us but a disaster. No, no data, no costs, no anything was sent to us on why we're at, having this community do this. This could have been a fifteen minute meeting and I gotten all that information. Instead, I have to ask all these questions because I don't have it. So, I mean, this is not to me, and I and I am sorry if it's offensive, but it is not acceptable. It is not an acceptable way for me to make a decision on an emergency, on a local disaster. Yeah, that, those words, I take that super seriously, just like you do, Judge. And when I see the words local disaster and there's nothing that I can see going on in Nuasis County, except the fact, and I don't say this lightly, but accept the fact that we have red fire days, red flag fire days, and we have them regularly. In fact, I'd like to know that data. I want you to go back, please, and tell me how many of these red fire data flag days we've had in this community over the last few years? And how many conditions like this and why now we're we're doing it? I get it because of Clayburn, but that's what I thought we had mutual aid for. So this presentation has left me with more questions than answers and put me in an uncomfortable position because I don't wanna not do it if it's really needed. But based on the presentation today, I'm not convinced we need to declare a local disaster for Nuasis County. With all the mutual aids that we have involved, with all the reimbursement potentials, emergencies are not to get grants, emergencies are if there's emergencies. And I'm not saying that's the only reason someone's asking for an emergency. But I get that we want to be reimbursed, I I do. But I think there's ways to get reimbursed without declaring a disaster in your county if there's not a disaster. So I'm I'm telling you, I'm very torn on this. If we didn't have a meeting next week, I would just vote no and say, let's go on down the road. I'm gonna sit here and think about things before I decide what I'm gonna do. And I might say, okay, great, let's extend it till Wednesday. And that'll give you all the time to give me the information I need. And then maybe my mind will change and it, maybe it does need to be extended, maybe the fire days will go away. But I am real nervous about setting the precedent on and how we set these disasters when there is not one at my, in my opinion, in Nuasis County. Yes, there's, there is an imminent threat of fire because of our conditions. But holy cow, if this is the standard we're gonna use in Nuasis County, then I'm afraid we're gonna have ten of these a year. And I and I'm not, and I don't, uh, that that makes me very uncomfortable. So I'm gonna just be quiet and think about it for a while, so thank you.
Okay, so, um, we, um, I had the motion on the floor in a second.
I have a question.
Yes, go ahead.
Can any of you tell me how many acres have been burned here in Nuasis County?
So last time I checked, Commissioner, it was for the Pentus fire, there was about approximately about twenty-five acres burned. And then for the, uh, Palm Tree and the, um, the other fire, it was called, um, escaped my mind right now, but there was two other fires. There was approximately about fifteen acres acres apiece for those, so it's close to about fifty acres.
And it sounds to me like this is all, I keep hearing the word threshold. Is this about reaching the threshold so we can get some monies? Or, let me ask, we did lose a brush truck, okay? Is any of that equipment insured?
I have to check, Commissioner, I'm pretty sure that it was, but I have to check.
I just don't like the idea of duplicating things like this if, you know, I mean, if if it's really a disaster, and I don't really think it is, okay? And I'm sure other counties and Clayburn, they themselves also carry some kind of insurance and they can be reimbursed. But, uh, I don't think it's a disaster right over here. I mean, a an imminent threat can happen at any time. Somebody cut in the yard and you hit metal to metal and sparks, okay? An imminent threat can happen at any time. We don't have to go on the presumption that we're in the imminent threat.
So Commissioner, I think what you're asking me is, uh, basically, at this point, why are we talking about extending this disaster? And I I would tell you that if we're talking about just prevention and being prepared for any other disaster that's coming out, this is a good move. Uh, it keeps us in line with what our neighboring counties does. And it's also allows us to, the opportunity, if we have to extend, or if we have a fire, or if anything happens, I hope not, that we can go into, into a disaster declaration with the rest of the state to get those federal dollars to help us reimburse, uh, our local partners. Now, if you, as far as insurance, I'm I'm pretty sure there's a deductible with that. So I'm pretty sure there's had to be one paid. So that's, that's, again, that's another cost. Now, if we get a disaster declaration that's, that's approved by the, at the federal level, then there's a twenty-five, seventy-five percent cost share. And and that helps us a lot.
And now, with the new federal legislation, actually, they just moved from seventy-five, twenty-five to ninety-ten, so it's even better. So what I'm inclined to do in the interest of time is to take the recommendation.
Okay, and you guys are gonna sign off on paperwork and all this, declaring that it was a disaster, it is a disaster, right?
So I don't sign off on any paperwork for, and it, and declare any disasters, that's, that's not my job, Commissioner.
Uh, Fire Marshal, do you sign off on anything? Nothing? No, I'm just saying, and I'm still worried and concerned that you're not certified yet, sir. Here we are, using you to make audiences, uh, to come up and tell us, you know, uh, what you think, uh, when you're not even certified. Uh, how long, again, how long is it gonna take you to get certified, sir?
So, um, I can have him answer, but I need the count, court manager or the county attorney. So he has met all the qualifications of a fire marshal for the state of Texas. And he does not have an arson investigator license yet, or certification, I should say. But he is a certified fire marshal for the state of Texas. He has his peace officer license and he has all, has met all other statutory requirements. And so, again, I think that sort of gets off the path, but if you're worried about him being a.
The last time he told us that he was taking off, uh, online courses.
To be, to to receive certain certifications, that's correct, but it has no bearing on the fact.
So you are a certified marshal then?
He represents the state of Texas.
Yes, sir.
You are?
Yes, sir.
Do you have any certificates that you can show us, bring us?
I can bring you my peace officer's license.
No, no, I'm not asking you, but anybody can be a peace officer, sir. Just, well, not just anybody, but a police officer is a police officer. There we have peace officer right there standing guarding the door, okay? But I'm not, I'm sure he's not a a fire marshal.
Right, he wasn't hired as a fire marshal.
Right, so the fire marshal statute is what we look to. We look to the law and what you want to know is whether or not we followed the law for fire marshals. And the answer is we have. And so anything extra that he gets is important to the county, like an arson investigator's license. And you know, because we've mentioned it before, that due to COVID nineteen and the ability to not have in-person classes, he has not received his arson investigator's license. But again, we're digressing. He is a fire marshal in the state of Texas, there's two hundred and fifty-four counties. There is a law that governs fire marshals, and he meets the law's requirements.
So all I'm asking is, give us a copy of your certificate, I'm sure you got a certificate, right?
So there's no certificate, he was hired as a fire marshal and he meets the statutory requirements.
Well, then we should stop hiring people, Judge, that don't qualify and then pay them for two, three years, okay? Because they're not exactly what we need. And that happened to us in another case that I'm not allowed to mention.
I'm, again.
We should stop doing things like.
I don't know what this relevance is, Jenny, to here, I'm gonna need some assistance.
Anything past your, your questioning of.
I understand, I, and we've been through this before, that's why I'm not mentioning any, any names or any departments or what.
But but but, yeah, those things are not noticed on the agenda, and that's the problem. It's not an agenda item to discuss, you know, hiring practices.
Well, but I mean, it's, I think it's relevant though, Jenny, I'm gonna disagree with you. I mean, I think it's relevant because he's, I mean, he's asking him questions on, I mean, he's making recommendations to this court on an emergency. He's asking questions whether or not he's qualified to make those recommendations. So I, with all due respect, I I think it's relevant to the agenda, so.
Well, I think that it's fair to ask whether or not he has met the statutory requirements of a fire marshal. And I can certify to this court as an officer of the court that he has met the statutory requirements that the state of Texas puts forth for being a fire marshal. And I don't think there's any dispute about that from H R or county attorney's office or my office of emergency management. And I feel like it really.
Fair response, I mean, you can, I think that's a fair response.
Is that okay? I mean, because that's, that is really, I I'd like to get us back on track.
No, and.
Um, and I, and what I was gonna suggest is that.
Question for Jenny before you call a vote, so.
I was gonna amend, just so you know.
Oh, okay.
Do you wanna make, wanna hear that first?
Just gonna ask my legal question, but sure, you can go ahead and do whatever.
I mean, I just wanna make sure that you hear the amendment so that if it ever asks, because I think you wanna ask about.
No, I'm just gonna ask something completely different, but.
Well, go ahead then.
Okay, sorry. Um, so Jenny, my understanding on these emergencies are, the way I read them, I may be wrong, but the way I read them is, governor declared, or, well, judge declares, we have to vote seven days after. And, um, if we vote not to extend, then the court would have to, on a second similar emergency, the court would have to issue that declaration. And the, the, my understanding is that, like, in other words, um.
If it's the same emergency. If it's the same emergency, uh, I believe that's accurate. I don't have that part of the code in front of me, but, um, if it's a different, I mean, it it would be very easy to be a different situation here in Nuasis County that the judge would have.
And that's what I'm getting at, so, so. Because I I don't wanna hamstring the judge. At the same time, I don't, I'm I'm not super comfortable with where we are today, based on the information, lack of information I've been provided. And I am gonna say that three more times to exercise my frustration on this. So my, my understanding is, is that, exactly what you said. So if a different, like, in in other words, if, because I I don't even know, is the Clayburn fire is, has that been contained? Is that one, that's done?
Yes.
Okay, so that one's done, the Refugio one's done, there's not even, there's not fires blazing around us right now. So my, my belief is, as we sit here today, we don't have an emergency in Nuasis County today. But my belief also is, is if something significantly changes tomorrow, then the judge, because it would be a different declaration, could still turn around and and declare an emergency if something happened because it would be different enough to to justify that. But I I wanna be sure because that's important to me because I, a- again, if if a fire breaks out tomorrow and and it's, and the judge needs to declare an emergency, and that's different than the emergency we had, because really, the emergencies we had before were more because of mutual aid. And so I'm just, I wanna be, I wanna be sure on that because that's important to me. Because I I think if things got worse again on Monday or Tuesday, that she could turn around and and issue another emergency because it's not the exact same emergency. But I know there is language that says, um, i- if we don't extend this one, um, then the court has to, if it's the exact same emergency, then the court, I think, has to be involved in the second one. Um, so I I may need a little, I may need a little break to give you some time to go answer that question for me because, um, as I sit here today, I don't think there's a a need for a local disaster in Nuasis County. But I don't me, mean, but I wanna make sure that the judge has the ability that if that changes tomorrow, that she could still go and declare another emergency if she so chooses. So that's, that's just an important legal note that I wanna add, have, again, an answer on before I vote.
And, um, oops. And so, um, what I was going to do in the, in an effort to bring more information, and I will consult with Chief Ovaya on this, to bring more information, I'd like to amend my motion if Commissioner Modas would agree to a second withdrawal with me, his second, and then we could amend it, which would be to allow the continuation until next week. We just happen to have a meeting next week. And that would provide a few more days of time, uh, for us to provide significant information and maybe even have, hear from, from others, um, other perspectives, for example, Corpus Christi Fire Department, uh, et cetera. So, um, again, it's all about making certain that we bring resources. So, um, again, it's all about making certain that we bring resources in. So I think the amendment is that we would extend until next week and we could bring it back, um, on next week's agenda. There is still time because we have not posted and so we could add that. I'd like, I mean, I could make that, you know, request of the court manager. And that would move us along today's processes. Commissioner Modest, do you find that acceptable enough to second?
Sure, second.
Okay, so I think we've had the opportunity and of course, that's given in a, in a spirit of compromise. I do believe and wanna go on the record that I stand, you know, ready to extend. But in the effort of compromise and time and the requests that you've issued, sorry about that, Connie, I walked away from that mic. Um, again, I, I think it's important to be able to provide that information. Again, I think it, you're gonna find it's less about a raging fire and more about resources. But let us bring you that, that story, uh, and that, that perspective, uh, from, from the state of Texas, um, in emergency management. I hope that that meets with some acceptance and I will call for the vote, all those.
Judge, if you're, I, I am gonna ask again. Because until I get my question from Jenny answered, I'm not gonna be able to support that and-
I'm sorry, you said you cannot support that?
Until I get my question answered from Jenny.
What was the?
In, because my unders- my understanding is, is that if tomorrow something dramatically happened differently, then the, the judge could go ahead and declare another order. I don't see today that there isn't a local disaster needed today. But I wanna make sure because if tomorrow the judge, if a fire breaks out, something happens and she needs to declare an emergency, I think she still could if that's what she wanted to do, if it's different than this one. In other words, the, the way I understand it's set up is you, uh, you, if a court doesn't extend, then the county judge can't just tomorrow for no reason, um, extend another one without court approval. But if something dramatically different happens, that's different than the first emergency, like an imminent threat, literally like something going on in New Oasis County, that she could. But that's the legal question that I wanna make sure on because if, if tomorrow something happens, I wanna make sure that the judge can do that. But to, cause today, when you're asking me to vote, I don't feel like there's a, an imminent enough threat to tell the whole community there's a local disaster with, there's no fires and we have these conditions regularly. And I don't have any information, and I don't have any information that I need to do this today. And so if you, if I'm pushed for a vote today, then I, I'm not leaning-
Well, I'm not able to table this, Brent, because unfortunately, the seven-day rule is a seven-day rule. Otherwise, I'd be happy to table it.
I'm not saying table it like passed today. I'm just saying, I wanna know the answer to the legal question. It could be for thirty minutes. I mean, it could be for whatever, an hour. I mean, it can be, if you don't want to, Judge, I'm okay, that's fine.
I mean, I understand that, but just so you know, you, I think it's important to understand that this is an extension from the time of the disaster. So it's not about, first of all, there is an imminent threat today, that, that's for sure. Um, and maybe that's where, I, I hate to bring back, you know, the same discussion. But Chief Ovaya, one of the things that I think the court is, I'm hearing from this court is they are trying to come up with a, they, they're using emergency in, in, in lieu of imminent threat. And so disasters are issued without there being an emergency. Isn't that correct?
So that's correct. So disaster declaration is also preparing for that imminent threat I mentioned before. Uh, so you, uh, once you activate, in other words, once you do a disaster declaration, you're, you're activating the, the county's programs and for example, your emergency operation plan. And that's your, kind of your guidance to do what you need to do. Primarily the tracking of costs and also the use of, uh, of, of, of other annexes in, in your declaration. So that's, that's the purpose of your, of the county declaration.
Right, so I guess I wanna make, yeah, thank you, that's perfect. So for me, Commissioner Chesney, you're using a different metric than, than the metric that we need to be using for the county to make certain that imminent threat is addressed. This extension, um, needs to be, you know, needs to be voted on. That's why the governor has declared Oasis to be a part of it. Because he believes and his office believes of emergency management that we and the other counties around us do face that imminent threat. It does put us on a preparedness. And I do understand completely, completely, how the words can be utilized in a way that make it appear to be confusing. But we need to make certain that we treat this incident like we treat all incidents with regards to extreme weather. And that is, is that we must, if you will, activate the emergency management plan so that we can have and avail ourselves of the right plan to prepare our community. The community should be prepared for a serious imminent threat of wildfire. This is nothing to play around with.
But, but Judge, the, it's not like we're not, uh, uh, in other words, if this is the threshold that we're gonna use, then we're gonna have ten emergencies a year. We need to, we need to, we need to make that clear to everybody that if this is the threshold, and I may be, again, cause I don't have the information, I'm, I think that's the second of the three that I'm gonna mention, that I needed to do this today. But we have these kind of conditions in New Oasis County eight to ten times a year. I get these weather blasts. So if this is the new threshold for, um, emergencies in New Oasis County, I'm not talking about Clayburn, I'm not talking about San Tricia, I'm not talking about these other counties. And I appreciate the heck out of the fact that the governor included New Oasis County in there because it gave us an opportunity to take a look and see. But the, I mean, we're gonna be, if this is the new standard for, for emergencies in New Oasis County, then we're gonna be under emergency disasters ten to twelve times a year based on red flag, windy conditions, dry conditions and potential fires. Because we get this kinda thing a lot, unless someone can tell me that's wrong.
So Brent, you're, you're not, your prediction could be true, but let me just assure you that we do not control Mother Nature. Unfortunately, we have seen our unfair share of extreme weather. And whatever the weather, whatever she brings, we will have to adjust and respond. Since tw- two thousand and ten, Texas has been granted nineteen federally declared major disasters, six federally declared emergencies and seventy-two federal fire management assistance declarations. This is historic numbers. This is why Texas leads the nation, I'm sorry to say, in the worst category, which is declared emergencies. All I can tell you is that our job is to be prepared. And I would please ask that you stand with us so that we can create this preparedness. This is what this extension is all about. This helps your county, it helps your taxpayer. And I would ask that you please allow us to extend because this is the right thing to do. There were, there were resources that were expended in the past that we need to see. We don't wanna close the door to not having the opportunity to receive assistance if we're entitled to it. Just so you know, to the, I asked Chief Penya this just yesterday, it kinda shocked me. But we haven't even closed out Hurricane Ike since two thousand and eight. This is the nature of emergency management. It is, can be frustrating, but I assure you that I don't wish these declarations on any of us. But they are needed to protect our community. Please help me protect our community by extending this till next week so that we can get these questions answered for you regarding mutual aid. I don't believe our county attorney was ready to answer mutual aid questions today. And, and I think it's important that all the resources, um, this is the process we've used for flooding, okay? That helped your communities in the, in the western part of our communities, northwestern. This is the same process we use for hurricanes. It's the same process we use, um, when we believe that our folks need to be protected.
So can I ask Chief, or Mr. Ovaya, I'm looking at this weather thing again. And, and there are other parts of the state that are far more extreme in their fire ratings or fire likelihoods than us. Are they under emergency declarations? And I'm looking at this one that the National Weather Service that says extreme. And it's extreme in Odessa, El Paso, Lubbock, Midland, Abilene, Amarillo. Are there emergency declarations out there? And those are extreme. We're only in the, we're in the very high and then there's the extreme.
So, so Commissioner, yes, uh, like I mentioned before, there's over seventy counties-
How many?
That are under declaration right now. Seventy counties.
Seven zero?
Seven, seven zero, se- yes, sir, seventy.
Governor did his for our area, he did it and just included our, is it like a regional? Cause I thought the one I read only had eleven or so counties listed in it, right? The ones that I, that got, that I got from the governor that y'all sent me? I thought it listed the eleven counties around us.
He list, I, I'll pull it up again, but I believe all of them are listed.
So what I can ta- so, so what I can tell-
Maybe it just listed our counties.
There's two, there's two declarations, there are simultaneously going side by side. You had the fire incident and then you also have the severe weather threat, the tornadoes that occurred. So there's, there's a little bit less, uh, counties on that one compared to the severe weather one. A correction to the severe, the fire weather.
So the fire one, there's seventy on the fire ones? Seventy counties?
Right, over, correct. So every day, uh, you, you are eligible or y'all can have access to this information. It's what we call the disaster summary outlines, okay? And so I just did a count this morning, it's over seventy counties that submitted declarations, uh, for this critical fire incident with it.
Okay, so, um, and let me pull that one up that the governor, that, that one that the-
Including all our District Twenty.
Okay, so maybe that was just one specific for District Twenty?
I think that's what maybe, no, I'm saying to you, including all of our District Twenty. So all of our, if, if we do not, our, our declaration includes District Twen- I'm sorry. Our declaration is consistent with, uh, District Twenty. And again, there is also a very, I wanna put this into the record. You can have, there's a very good website on Texas A&amp;M University System, that's tedom dot texas dot gov. And it, there is a very important overview that really summarizes the justification for today. I think we've kind of talked it out, but increased fire weather conditions exist for South Texas. Dry fuels paired with low relative humidity creates potential dangerous fire conditions throughout the week. Texas in the areas of concern are encouraged to make an evacuation plan with multiple routes, prepare an emergency kit with supplies, heed guidance from local officials and monitor local news. Texans who sustain damage caused by wildfires are encouraged to, uh, report damage through Istat. Of course, these are the justifications that are very similar when a hurricane or a event happens inside our community, uh, like a tropical storm, tornado, whatever the, whatever the extreme weather is. And these are the bullet points that, again, I place into the record through this oral, you know, process, um, to make sense of it all. But again, we're going to, it's best to, to cumulatively, um, bring all these wildfires together, Commissioner. So that's why we like to extend because it dates us back to our first resource that we expended. I believe you are correct. Um, I mean, I know you're waiting not for me, but you're waiting for the county attorney. But I believe you to be correct when you say that if circumstances, if you were not to extend this declaration and a fire were to break out, I believe I could issue a declaration. However, we would not be capturing all of the lost resources that have been expended. And that would be a shame because our county judges around us are doing that in an effort to send those dollars up to the state. By not saying that there was an imminent threat, by not acknowledging this extension of the disaster, we hurt our state, in my opinion. We hurt the process. And quite frankly, we need to be in lockstep when it comes to disasters with our state. Um, again, you're saying something I think is a truism. We are seeing an unprecedented amount of Mother Nature, um, acts of extreme weather from wildfires to tornadoes. And yes, I think that it is incredibly serious. And for twenty nineteen, twenty twenty and twenty twenty-one, we did not issue any wildfire declarations. So it's not true that you would see them all the time or ten times a year. This is extraordinary, this is different. I'm letting you know that at the top level statewide calls, they believe it's different. And I do believe it's acting in the best interest. But at some point, we just have to move on. We've, you know, we need to vote on the extension. I have offered the olive branch to extend till next Wednesday. I would, I would again offer that, but if that's not gonna change your mind, then let me just go back to my original request of the extension so that we can, that we can move on, please.
Whatever you need to do, I mean, I'm, I'm okay with that. I don't, I'm not saying that, so I'm reading this weather thing again, so I'm, and again, I'm, I'm admitting I'm doing this on the fly because I don't have any information given to me. So what the, what this reads on the weather forecast is, is it says, "These conditions will lead to elevated to critical fire conditions with fuels continuing to be extremely dry. The forecast fire danger will be very high. Fire weather conditions can linger into Sunday as breezy winds are expected to continue with low relative values." So I, I'm, I, I would be willing to extend through Sunday and that's, then I'm, and then if there's another emergency, then you can declare it. Because if that's not good enough, I understand, I'm just reading the weather.
It doesn't help, uh, Commissioner, I mean-
They're saying the fire conditions could linger into Sunday and then moisture's going to come into the area and it will, it's going to start making it to where it's not an emergency. So if it's not an emergency, I mean, I'm willing to do it through Sunday because that's what the weather forecast does. And this is the only thing I've got to go on based on, uh, what everybody else is saying. And so that ought to give us a few more days to see. And then if, if you, if something else changes and it happens and it's different, cause substantially different and you have to declare another one on Monday, then I think you have the ability to do that. But I think, I don't, I don't, I'm just, I'm not real comfortable with where we are today because I don't have the information that I need to make a decision.
So-
And I don't think we're in an imminent threat position.
Yeah, I think-
For New Oasis County, that's just what I think.
I think it, I think you've made your position on the record.
I'd be willing to go Sunday.
I think what we're gonna do is just, I'm gonna go back to my original motion, cause I have tried. I think, you know, Commissioner, Wednesday is a, is a, uh, is a reasonable request to bring it back to the next agenda. But, um, you know, again, we have laid the predicate, I think sufficiently, to bring the information to you verbally that, again, Chief Ovaya is here representing Texas Department of Emergency Management. The, the purpose here is not to, not to declare that something is happening now, is to help us recover what we have already lost. And that is really going to be lost if you don't extend this declaration. That to me is a big loss for the county, but only you can, you, you have the right to vote against that. I, I wish that you wouldn't because we've never done that to any other disaster. We've always tried to make certain that if there, you, you've already properly stated that we had good reason to call for the disaster on April the first. And what we're trying to do by the extension is allow the state to get that federal deck and then allow us to recuperate those costs. If you extend to Sunday, quite frankly, you're not gonna help us get there. Because those, that declaration needs to be standing so that when we receive those assistance from PA, which is the FEMA PA, that we would have the ability to be operating under our plan to recuperate those costs. That's what we do, we respond and we recover. So at some point, you just need to say whether you're going to be for that recovery or not. And the way we do that is by extending the disaster declaration. I think you're, I'd like you to help us message this correctly, which is that imminent threat is based upon National Weather Service data, like we do for hurricanes. We have that data. Chief Ovaya has confirmed that data. It's on the tedom dot gov website right now. And I think it's gonna extend through the month of March. But, I'm sorry, uh, through the, through the month of April, sorry. But I do believe that you can get more information. But seven days after a declaration, you're not gonna have all the costs because we're still in the process of recovering them. I wish that the process would be better understood because an emergency is a misnomer here. But the emergency is the preparedness for the emergency. We really, we really should be in lockstep on this. I'm not sure what the concern is here. Uh, I really have listened carefully, but I, I think that the state of Texas is giving you all the clues you need. The governor has included us in the disaster. Extending it is helping our state. To not extend it does not help our state. So, um, again, I mean, I don't know. I mean, maybe we should, uh, leave it. Commissioner Modest, I mean, I, I'd love some guidance here. I mean, I'm happy to, to vote on it for the Wednesday. But that was an olive branch to get them, you know, to get commissioners- But that was an olive branch to get them, you know, to get commissioners more information. This is really important to me, that we all have unity when it comes to preparedness for our emergencies. You would not want to be in a situation where your ESDs could have been paid or repaid, and you didn't give them that chance. That would be, that would not be a positive message that, that we could send here. That's all this extension's going to do. It's, it's going to help us open the door for, in fact, all of you have had precincts that have benefited by grants that come after the disaster, like CDB GDR. When these wildfires have run their course, there will be a demand for resources under hazard mitigation. If we have our disaster declaration extended, we would avail ourselves of those grants. Why wouldn't we want to do that? I, I'm really, the information that you request is here before you. It's here in the presence of Tedom, it's here with your emergency management team. And the reason you don't have anything more is because we haven't received anything more. I mean, it's not been but a few days. It takes our jurisdictions a while to submit their PDAs to us. Typically, the state gives us thirty days to get our assessments.
And Mr. Ovaya, didn't, isn't, it's my understanding too, that if expenses are incurred during a disaster, even after the declaration is no longer in place, that those can still be submitted to meet the threshold, correct?
That's correct, Commissioner, so, because you're still, like the judge mentioned, you're still trying to recuperate, get that information from the response that y'all did, from the damages as a result of disaster. Additional details to, to help us facilitate the documentation of, of the incident. So that's still ongoing.
Even with or without the declaration disaster, you can still submit expenses that were incurred during something like this, and that still meets the threshold.
During that timeframe, correct, correct. So the, the reason for the disaster, the extension of the disaster declaration for, for jurisdictions that are, that just experienced a disaster is for those other annexes that are in place within that, within your emergency operations plan. That includes emergency purchases, that includes other recovery programs that you have for, for the community. So that's the purpose of the extension of, of the disaster declaration, if the jurisdiction desires to.
Okay.
And particularly those recovery programs are the ones that we really look to, I think.
Again, I just want to make sure, with or without a declaration, we can still put those expenses towards a threshold, and they can still potentially be reimbursed if need be. We, we don't have to have a declaration of disaster in place to do that, if there's not an imminent threat. I mean, if someone, if something happens.
We can do that, but typically with the disaster, we utilize a formula and a process, and that process comes from our emergency management plan. Again, look, I, I, you know, we've beaten it up for about an hour and a half.
I'm good, Judge.
Longer, I mean, just, you get to vote against it, I mean, you get to vote for it, it's just, it's a choice. It's a choice to be, you know.
And if it doesn't pass, I'll make a subsequent motion to extend to Sunday, because that's what I think, based on the weather services I've seen, that that's what would be appropriate. So if it doesn't pass, that'll be the subsequent motion that I'll make.
Just so you know, your effect of Sunday.
That gives it a couple more days.
It gives it a couple more days, but it does not allow this court to address it again, because there's no mechanism, Commissioner Chesney. If you'll do it on Wednesday, the court would, would have the ability to come back and address it. On Sunday, as you know, we're not in court. You would not be able to extend it, and the information that, that we would have would not be, be able to be brought to you, that we could collect in the meantime.
The ability if something happened, to declare another emergency, if you so deemed it, that it was a subsequent emergency that was different than the emergency rendered, and you have the, you know, there's nothing, there's no harm, no foul, in my opinion, because you have the ability to move forward unless.
So, again, I, I disagree. I think that there is, there is harm in a community that expended resources. And for you to argue that we will have the same exact opportunities is not correct. We will not have the same exact opportunities. There are workarounds, and we will do those workarounds, like continue to take our resources. But FEMA will not look kindly upon jurisdictions that do not have disasters in place, because they look for the emergency management plan to be triggered. That's the only way that we have in order to recover things like when ESDs.
But Judge, there's nothing going on right now that we need to be expending resources on, zero. There's no fires out there, there's nothing going on. That's what I'm trying to say, there's no imminent threat if there's nothing happening. If an imminent threat happens, as you think that it will happen, then you have that right, because something new has occurred. Right now, we shouldn't be spending any resources on anything, because there's nothing going on.
Well, Commissioner, a part of that is, is just being prepared for anything to happen. This, this declaration will help us with that.
Then we should just live under an emergency declaration, I guess.
Commissioner, we are in what's called a fire season right now. This, this is different from what we had in the past. I mean, all of Texas is under this, basically.
Right.
All our partners to the west of us, all our partners that's maybe south of us, our community neighbors, we're all under the same thing. Even North Texas had the same issue. And if we go on the premise of a weather forecast, we may not get rain. Or we may get just very little to increase the fuel that's on, on the ground and make things worse. So this deck will help us.
Yeah, I, look, I, I'll just say this final thing, I'm going to go ahead and already unplug my iPad here, but this declaration, of course, will help us. And we will stand in isolation to our regional partners, who all clearly understand the importance of a disaster declaration as it, as it applies to emergency management, emergency preparedness, and, and the programs that come after an emergency. But if, if it is the desire of this court not to be comporting with what best practices are all around our region, then, again, there's only so much that we can do. But I will tell you, it is our job to make certain that we bring to the court, under the law, you know, the opportunity to extend. And it should not be as difficult, to be honest with you, because everybody understands that we are in unprecedented wildfire times. I do not remember in the past where we have seen such terrific devastation in our state for wildfires. And when our, today, we might be helping our neighbors, and tomorrow, our neighbors might be helping us. And it is a shame that we cannot rise to the occasion to understand the purposes of the processes that have been put in place. And so, I'll just ask that I'll give you the opportunity to, to do the right thing and to extend this disaster declaration. And we'll just, we'll move on. Again, I've offered Wednesday, I think we should try, try that motion, and, because it's on the floor. And that way, I don't have to redo it, Kara. And that would be to next week. And so I do have a motion, and Commissioner Modest did second. And this would be just till next Wednesday. And that would give us the opportunity to have, the opportunity to, quite frankly, bring in more resources to explain. If you knew that there was a chance that you were hurting the opportunity to bring in programs or resources, and all you had to do was wait till Wednesday, I cannot imagine why you would not say aye. And that's what we're asking here today, is to allow the opportunity to be had until next Wednesday, so that, again, your county will not be denied their opportunity. It's as simple as that. And if there's a chance that you could be, you could give your county more opportunities, wait till Wednesday. That is the motion, motion and a second.
What would be done between now and Wednesday?
Well.
Gather all the information.
To be honest.
Is anybody going to spend any more money?
To be honest with you, what would be done between now and Wednesday would be for me to be able to work with Tedom, because clearly, there is a big disconnect about the purposes and the processes.
What I want to know is, yeah.
And I'd like to bring them to bear with some more information.
I get, but, like, what resources, assuming nothing changes, would be spent between now and Wednesday? Assuming there's no more fires? What are we, what are we going to do between now and Wednesday that, that we need to extend this at all? What, what, what is, like, other than getting the information that we don't have and we haven't had? Because what are, what are we going to do? I mean, there's no fires right now, there's no danger, there's no, so what, what would y'all do, other than gather the information?
So, Commissioner, basically what you're asking me to do is just picture a perfect world right now, and I'm being honest. If there's nothing happening, then it's nothing happening. Of course, we're not spending any resources on it, but there could be something happening.
But then you could still spend that, because you're an emergency management, you could still spend it. And Mr. Ovaya said it could still be potentially reimbursed. So even if something happened, in other words, there's no practical reason that I can see to extend this, because you could still go out and do everything you can do with or without this declaration if something happens, and those expenses could all be potentially reimbursed, is what Mr. Ovaya said. You're still an emergency manager, you still have the ability, she's still the emergency manager person, sorry, don't mean to be, emergency manager director, so.
Actually, that's not what Mr. Ovaya said. He said that we could collect and send up, but getting reimbursed is a whole different matter. He's not going to.
That meets the threshold, right, that meets the threshold, but I mean, and that's what I'm trying to say, so, so we can get the threshold, we can get it sent up for the threshold, but, good correction, I, I stand corrected, that's what, you're right. So that can still count toward the threshold. But if there's nothing that happens between now and Wednesday, then there shouldn't be any more dollars spent and any more need for reimbursement. If something happens, then the judge can declare an emergency immediately. So I don't understand why we're even.
Right, because, because of, if we met the threshold, if we met the threshold, then we would be able to have FEMA PA potentially give us resources here.
But the threshold can still be met.
Well, Commissioner, you're talking about if there's one event. So sometimes one event is not a disaster. And in the case of fire, it could be one home just being burned. And if that home is not a part of a wildfire event, then it's only a person that lives in that home to deal with that. And there's other ways we can do that. But if there's a wildfire event, for instance, the palm tree goes up again, and it catches on fire, then we have to, we, we, we're relying on other people to come in and help. Now, part of your assessment is correct. There won't be any monies being spent if there's nothing happening. And then that's a part of emergency management, and the part that you're talking about is just strictly recovery. We're still not being prepared. And if we stop this decoration, we stop the processes of being prepared. So having a decoration in, in play allows us to use our emergency support functions to help prepare our community for wildfire events. That preparedness comes with a cost as well. We can also recover that at the end, but right now.
Yeah, and having the declaration is critical.
Couple more days just to get it to Sunday, to see what looks, and, but I'm just, I'm sorry, there's just nothing going on.
I, I believe that, that the short.
I don't mean to keep bringing that up.
The short-sightedness here.
I understand you do, Judge, you just disagree.
Is that, is that you could wait till Wednesday, and at least allow us to identify the federal programs that could come as a result. Allow me the opportunity to speak with, you know, Chief Kidd and, and his team to help identify why these declarations, when they stand, are helpful in the future. There are so many good programs that Nuaces County has built upon because of federal disastrous declaration. And, you know, I, I just don't understand if there is a, if there is a, if there's nothing there, if it's just as you say, what would another three days hurt? Nothing, but it could harm. And I believe that all our brethren around us are doing the same thing today, which is extending these declarations. And it should weigh heavy on you, that if everybody in District Twenty is acting as a region for the benefit of their communities and the state, and that you're leading the charge against it in your county, that maybe there's something off here. Maybe we can bring in some more information between now and Wednesday. And I would ask that you try to, the spirit of compromise, because you're not.
No, 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 how about, no, 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 hold on.
That would work till Wednesday. There's nothing bad that's going to happen between Sunday and Wednesday.
No, right, but the other thing could be is, I might get some more information like today, if I don't extend it all the way to Wednesday, because this should have been here today. I mean, the bottom line, it boils down to, if every other commissioner's court got the same kind of presentation today, and they didn't ask question, then there's definitely something wrong there too. Because when you say, we're sending out something that says declaration of a local disaster, that's a big deal to me. So I'm willing to continue it on till Sunday, to see what happens. And then if you feel the need to extend it, because you think something substantially has changed over the weekend, and the weather hasn't lightened up. So I mean, I'm, I'm willing to extend it some.
I realize, I realize it, but what we brought.
That's not compromise to you, but it's compromise to me, because my position is, I don't think we need to extend it at all. So I'm trying to, like, come up with something.
I hear you, but.
And I get it's not exactly what you want, but I'm trying to.
No, it's, it's not what I want, it's what the state of Texas needs. It has nothing to do with me, and, and our, and I will tell you that I don't know about our other jurisdictional partners, they also have district coordinators. But what we brought for the court today, Commissioner Chesney, is Chief Ovaya, who represents the region, who has told you that these are the processes that are, that we utilize in emergency management. And these are the ways that we can seek recovery, and the ways that we can open up programs, and the ways that we can help people by being able to utilize the declaration. And I don't know about you, but when I see his uniform and his badge, I have a tremendous amount of respect for that, and that is the information that we brought you. We brought you the person, the very chief that we consulted with in designing this. And the, the purpose of having the declaration is to allow for its extension. The reason it's brought to you within seven days is because typically, you're not able to gather as a group the, the moment of the, of the extension. It's not meant, the very reason that we needed it is why you should extend it. Nothing has changed. This is just the opportunity to gather within seven days. That's why the law is put forth that way. You're changing it and making it a query as to whether or not something's happening right now. The, the purpose here is to make certain that we already know something happened. We already know something happened, something terrible happened. Fifty-five thousand acres were burned, we had tons of resources. We had a lot of people nervous, because it could have jumped and destroyed tons of private property. And quite frankly, I mean, we've already lost one first responder in the state. To not extend this is really, is really just to not understand the nature of this beast, which is an imminent threat. And honestly, I'm, I'm perplexed, because I could not have brought you a better person. To be honest with you, we asked for Gary, because I did not want to bother Chief Ovaya. Gary Barney is our district coordinator, he was not available, he's in another jurisdiction. The chief offered, he's been on the, on the, on here now for two hours. I don't know what more justification you could need besides the state of Texas, who is the expert in this field, to let you know that this is the right thing to do. I, I just can't do it. So I have a motion, and I have a second to extend till Wednesday. Please consider doing the right thing and allowing this extension, so that I can bring more Tedom processes and, and personnel to explain why it is so important to do what all the counties around us are doing, which is to extend and get us in that mode of response, and then, of course, recovery with the dollars. Nobody is complete in their processes yet, and by Wednesday, they won't either. But we can bring more information to you, if that could make a difference, which we hope it should.
So here's, here's what I'm willing to do, because I, I don't want this to end up in a.
Another question.
I, I was just going to, okay.
We ordered a follow-up question.
Sure, never mind, okay.
Okay, all those in favor of extending to Wednesday the April first declaration, please signify by saying aye. Aye. And those no?
No.
Okay.
I would make a motion to extend this through Sunday. And if any need arises to have any other emergency meetings or anything like that, I will make myself available. So that would be my motion to extend this Sunday.
I guess so.
I'm sorry?
I did not hear a second. Okay, well, hearing, hearing.
You don't want to extend it at all, then?
Hearing no second. Hearing no second, I'm sorry?
You don't want to extend it at all, that's fine, I'm just.
I, I, again, um, you know, the.
Are you talking about the, uh, Sunday that you made?
Yes.
I'll second that.
Okay, he's seconded it, and, um, I mean, I just, I don't even know what the purpose is anymore. We, we can't stand, we, I can't believe we pledged the flag, and then we do something like this, um, to the state of Texas. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, um, uh, John, did you, did you say aye?
No.
Okay, um. Yeah, I appreciate it, John, because I like someone holding the line. As the emergency manager, I'm going to give you the opportunity to have the extension, to have your people go on emergency management plan through Sunday. So I'll be the, the final aye. But I'm terribly disappointed in this court, um, in that they don't seem to want to stand, um, with our partners. And I, I'm certain that, that this is going to be a, a very bad precedent for us, um.
And again.
In our, in our court. Um, there is no executive session, and so we do stand adjourned. Thank you.